Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Covington City Council meeting for Tuesday, April 12. This city council meeting is being held telephonically and virtually in compliance with state executive and legislative actions responding to the COVID-19 emergency. With that, I'll call this meeting to order, and Krista, if you could please call the roll.
Yes, Councilmember Coco.
Here.
Councilmember Soltis.
Here.
Councilmember Harderhouser.
I am present.
Councilmember Simo.
I'm here.
Councilmember Porter. I'm sorry, we couldn't hear you. Okay, I can see, I can.
Here. Here, okay.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Smith.
I'm here as well.
Mayor Wagner.
I am here.
You have a call in your.
Thank you, Krista. If everybody could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much for that. Next up is approval of agenda. Before we do that, please note that we are working off of the amended agenda that was sent out last night. And what we, what was amended is that consent agenda item number C three is moved to new business. We did add a new item to consider authorizing the city manager in reference to SoCo Park, but I have, I'm going to renumber with council's approval, new business. I would like to have the item, the new item, consider authorizing the city manager to execute amendment number two for SoCo Park as new business item number six. The consent agenda item, which is the authorized city manager to execute a professional services agreement with epicenter services as new business item number seven. And then as the last new business item, number eight would be to accept council members Coco's resignation if we choose and approve the process to fill the vacancy. And with council's approval, we'd look for a motion to approve the amendments.
So moved.
So moved second.
It's been moved by Beth and seconded by Joe to approve the amended agenda. I'll call for a roll call vote. Jared, how do you vote?
Hi.
Sean, how do you vote?
Hi.
Christina, how do you vote?
Hi.
Jennifer, how do you vote?
Hi.
Joe, how do you vote?
Hi.
Beth, how do you vote?
Hi.
I also vote aye, it is approved. It's approve the agenda as amended. Next, we will move into public communication. We have a quarterly update of the Covington Chamber of Commerce by Dana. Dana, welcome. You are on mute. There you are.
That works.
Welcome.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to share what's been going on at the chamber. It sounds like you have a very full agenda tonight, so I will speak quickly and get through this as fast as I can. We've had a very busy first quarter. There's a lot of, lot of things going on and a lot of planning for the next quarter. Just a couple of things that are happening. We have returned to in-person events effective in March, and people are eager to get out. We had about forty people at the March luncheon and about thirty people at our joint after-hours event with Rotary. This week, we are holding our April luncheon. We've got about thirty-five RSVPs, so I'm very excited to see people's faces again. Perhaps the most exciting thing we have going on right now is the Covington Makers Market. I hope by now you've all heard about it and all have it on your calendar. Saturday, April twenty-third, from eleven to four, we will be on the grounds of Real Life Church and hosting a Makers Market. We've got more than thirty-five vendors and sponsors. We have a live band. Mayor Wagner is going to kick things off. We've got door prizes all day. We've got kids activities, a fire truck. You name it, we've got it. So super excited about that event, and it really achieves a number of our purposes. Number one, it supports small business, which is at the core of everything we do. It also provides a fun, family-friendly activity for people from throughout the region. We're attracting people, especially the vendors from all over the area, from cities that don't normally come to Covington for our events. It also supports our goal of becoming a welcoming city. You know, we've got this new clean, safe, welcome city committee, and the Covington Makers Market welcomes people to our community and introduces them to small businesses. Today, actually, yesterday, what day is it? It's Tuesday. Yesterday, we started planning for Ready, Set, Play. That is a program that the city started in twenty sixteen, I believe. This is the seventh year, and it's something the chamber does in partnership with the city of Covington. So Carl and I are already getting getting planning. We're reached out to all the businesses that participated last year, and we've got space for some new ones this year. Everybody seems very excited, especially since things are kind of opening back up and restrictions are are rolled back. So we are hoping for a super fun summer. We will be kicking it off at another new event the chamber is hosting this year. It will be the Health and Wellness Fair, which will be presented by MultiCare and on the MultiCare property on Saturday, June twenty-fifth. Happy to share these dates with you offline, so you don't have to scramble to write now. We're also working with the city to host a BNO Town Hall on Monday, June twenty-seventh, from five-thirty to seven PM. And in addition to all these public-facing changes that many of you may have already seen, we are working on strengthening our internal structure to be more efficient and to provide more opportunities for our businesses. So we are launching an association management system. A lot of people call it a CRM. You might have heard of called that. We are launching it tomorrow. Our members won't see the back end of that just yet. We're also working on launching a new website that will be much easier to navigate, create some new opportunities for our members, and also some additional revenue generating opportunities for the chamber. I'm really excited about the next quarter for the chamber. We have a huge year planned. Everything is going ahead of schedule. Got a lot of work ahead of us, but we couldn't do it without the support from community partners like the city, without our sponsors, our members, our board, and our ambassadors. You know, it really does take a village for us to be successful, and we appreciate your continued support. Please don't tell me I was on mute that whole time.
No, no, we heard you. Thank you, Dana. That was a very great update. I am looking forward to the Makers Market on the twenty-third. That will be very good. And then the Health and Wellness Fair on the twenty-fifth. Definitely looking forward to the BNO Tax and a BNO Tax meeting on the twenty-seventh, so that would getting as many businesses there to to get information. I'm gonna let Regan speak during that meeting, and I'll just sit in the corner and be quiet, so. But this council have any questions for Dana? Dana, thank you for everything you do and everything you do for Covington and the community, and please let the entire chamber board know that we appreciate everything they do as well.
Thank you. I will pass that along, and thank you for what you do. Appreciate you very much.
You have a wonderful evening. I'll see you Thursday.
Sounds good. Bye-bye.
Bye. Next up is our first of two public comment areas. Speakers will state their name, address, and organization. Comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff, and comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. Notice to all participants pursuant to state law, RCW forty-two dot one-seven-eight dot five-five-five. Campaigning for any ballot measure or candidate in City Hall and/or during any portion of the council meeting, including the audience comment portion of the meeting, is prohibited. Looking at our audience, is anybody in the audience wishing to address council this evening? Please raise your hand. Anybody in the audience wishing to address council? Seeing nobody raise their hand, we will have a second opportunity for public comment towards the end of our meeting. Thank you. Next is approval of the amended consent agenda. This consent agenda consists of items C one, C two, C four, C five, and C six. Look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Jared, seconded by Jennifer to approve the amended consent agenda. Call for a roll call vote. Jared, how do you vote?
Aye.
Sean, how do you vote?
Aye.
Christina, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jennifer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Joe, how do you vote?
Aye.
Beth, how do you vote?
Aye.
I also vote aye, it is unanimous to pass the amended consent agenda. Next up is new business item number one is to consider potential appointments to the Equity Cultural and Social Justice Commission. Does council wish to take any action tonight?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Sean.
I'd like to nominate Samantha Gomez Duran to the Human Services Commission. Oh, sorry, this is for equity. Sorry. I withdraw.
Okay.
I would like, I would like to nominate Mary Servin for the Equity Cultural and Social Justice Committee.
Do we have a second? Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to appoint Mary Servin to fill position number five on the Equity Cultural and Social Justice Commission with a term expiring September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. Jennifer, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, and thank you for reading that out for me. I appreciate it. I neglected to do that. Yes, Mary's enrolled in the criminal justice program at Green River and has a willingness and desire to serve on our Equity Cultural and Social Justice Committee. She seems like she would be a great fit, working together to make the community a better place. She's new to the area, and I agree with her. What a, what better way to get involved in your community than joining a commission?
Thank you, Jennifer. Sean, would you like to speak to your second?
Yeah, I was impressed or appreciated Mary's comments about her desire to get involved, even though she's only lived in Covington less than two years, I think is what she said. So I think that's really a plus on her side, and definitely I'm going to support her, her nomination.
Thank you, Sean. Is there anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? Seeing nobody raise their hands, it's been moved and seconded to appoint Mary Servin to fill position number five on the Equity Cultural and Social Justice Commission with a term expiring September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. Call for a roll call vote. Let's go. Jared, how do you vote?
Aye.
Sean, how do you vote?
Aye.
Christina, how do you vote? Jennifer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Joe, how do you vote?
Aye.
Beth, how do you vote?
Aye.
I also vote aye, it is unanimous to appoint Mary Servin to fill position number five. Thank you. Does council wish to take any further action tonight? All right, seeing nobody raise their hand, we'll move to new business item number two. Consider appointments to the Human Services Commission.
Mr. Mayor.
On.
Yeah, now I'd like to nominate Samantha Gomez Duran to the Human Services Commission.
Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Samantha Gomez Duran to the Human Services Commission. Sean, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It was nice to see Samantha stepping up and, and volunteering for one of these commissions, looking at her application. She's a sophomore at Kent Lake, and so I'm always impressed and want to encourage kids that want to get involved in their community and learn more. And so I was really struck by her comments, basically echoing that, saying she wants to get more real-world experience, wants to work with people both older and younger than her, and basically learning more about how the city operates. So I'm excited for her to, to serve on the Human Services Commission.
Thank you, Sean. Jennifer, would you like to speak to your second?
Sure. I was impressed by Samantha's involvement in her leadership group at, in high school and her identification of the human services as a, as a youth member, as a, another potential way to develop those leadership skills and provide her input. She seemed very keen on not just providing her input, but by listening to others and building a consensus based on that, and any opportunity for our youth to get involved, kind of echoing what Sean was saying, you know, we should promote that a hundred and twenty percent. Start them young in Covington, and they'll just keep making the place even greater.
Thank you, Jennifer. Anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? Right, seeing nobody raise their hand, it's been moved and seconded to appoint Samantha Gomez Duran to fill position number four on the Human Services Commission with a term expiring March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Call for a roll call vote. Jared, how do you vote?
Aye.
Sean, how do you vote?
Aye.
Christina, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jennifer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Joe, how do you vote? Beth, how do you vote?
Aye.
I also vote aye, is unanimous to appoint Samantha Gomez Duran to the Human Services Commission. Next up is new business item number three. Consider approval of the concept design for Jenkins Creek Park Project. And Ethan?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. So this agenda item is for the council to consider approving the Jenkins Creek Park project concept. As you're aware, the city purchased a parcel adjacent to the southeast Wax Roundabout for the purpose of creating a main park entrance for Jenkins Creek Park with the goals for providing visibility for made, from the major street and to provide parking to increase community access. So the city is now moving ahead with the project that will include these improvements. But because the city didn't own that parcel when the master plan was completed back in two thousand and eighteen, we're now bringing forward a concept, kind of design concept or layout for this parcel for the council to see and consider approved before we move forward with further design work and permitting. We have Kyle Braun here from the Watershed Company to present. The Watershed Company is lead consultant, helping the city with the project. They're also the same firm that did the master plan for the city for this park. So they're very familiar with the city and the park. And with that, I'll turn it over to Kyle, who I think maybe on as a panelist now.
I have promoted Kyle to panelist. However, it looks like he was lost.
Oh.
And now he's coming up.
Kyle, you with us? You there, Kyle?
Eric, can you hear me?
Yep.
Sorry about that. I promoted the, let me share my screen here. All right, you all see that?
No. Sometimes it takes a minute, though, so let's see if it pops up for us. Yeah, we're still not seeing it, Kyle.
Let me try sharing again here. It says, is your screen sharing?
Now we see it.
Okay, great. All right, good evening. I'm Kyle Braun. I'm with the Watershed Company. I've been working with Ian and the rest of the city staff on the Jenkins Creek Park. This is actually, as Ethan mentioned, a smaller portion of the larger park. So to provide you a little context here. Nice, there we go. So you're, as Ethan mentioned, we completed the master plan for larger Jenkins Creek back a couple of years ago. And it was kind of identified through that process that there was not really a true entrance, wasn't a lot of parking. So that kind of meant that away from the park. It was more of a, you know, walking access, and then folks that really knew about it, they found a way to park and enter, enter. So, so what we're calling kind of the, the phase one, the parking and entrance improvements is, as Ethan mentioned, on the old RV lot over here. So this is the, the preferred concept that we've arrived at through some back and forth with, you know, some design standards, and you know, there was quite a bit of the program elements that were flushed out through RCO application and some of those other things. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna go through kind of the amount of of our phase for the larger project. And then there's some other elements that are, you know, directly responding to, you know, design standards, right-of-way requirements for future one-eightieth and so, so on. So, excuse me, so I'll, we'll mention those later on. So the first one is the front plaza here is right off the Wax Road Roundabout. We were envisioning a plaza, kind of a, a draw-in off of the roundabout to gather in some vehicular traffic to, to let people know that the park is there, because a lot of folks, if you don't know, you're, you're driving by, you need something to, to, to draw in and bring users in from outside the area. So here's some kind of precedent examples. I noticed a couple of you have seen your, in your background here over at Covington Community Park, and then also the, the Abe Singer sculpture over there as well. So we're envisioning that's probably some commissioned art from, you know, local artists within the city. Second one, self-blocking gate. This is pretty self-explanatory. It's, it's aligned with our, you know, crime prevention through environmental design. So we want to make sure that there is not, there's not people, there's not use in parking lot after certain hours. So we were putting in self-blocking gates that would, you know, close after dusk. And then there's also just clear sightlines and, and visibility from all the roads so that you can see the entrance of the park and, you know, from all different angles so that police can patrol, can can easily view in without, you know, getting out of their car and going into the actual park. Stormwater features. So as you can see, we're pretty close to Jenkins Creek over here, which lies to the west. So with putting in a large parking lot like this, there's gonna be quite a bit of stormwater runoff that we need to treat. Preliminary soil reports show that there's some fill that we need to deal with. So this is gonna be a combination of some subsurface probably, and then some surface drainage features similar to something like this. I think there'll be a big aspect of this will be coordinating with city maintenance on just what they're comfortable maintaining, just to ensure that the park, you know, it's stays good through through its maintenance is all, you know, sometimes it gets forgotten in these early processes when, you know, everyone's excited, and there's a lot of community buy-in behind it. So, and then the drop-off zone, so pretty, again, pretty self-explanatory. This allows drop-off of Uber, you know, people that are driving. The Jenkins Creek Trail provides kind of a through access. So, you know, someone can get dropped off at this end and potentially can get picked off at the other, dropped off, and then walk in to, you know, residents that are farther to the west there. Something like this, you know, you're all probably familiar with drop-off, the, your city hall, the school, the, the schools around the area. And then this is probably the most important, the park entrance and trail terminus. As I mentioned, you know, the, the, this is, the Jenkins Creek is an inward-facing park, so it doesn't have a lot of exposure to really any street frontages, other than the very street ends that lie in pretty residential areas. So we want to enhance the street end here, but like I said, create this gateway experience, but then also creating a terminus for these east-west, north-south connections that were identified in some of the larger trail lands throughout the city. I would be, you know, work with some of the public private partnerships of MultiCare and more, planning for this being kind of a trailhead and a junction where, where these trails come together, folks will use these areas in Covington to connect. Back to the site plan again, I mentioned, so those are the, the, the main program elements that, that will be moving forward within here. But then there's also six through eleven, which I mentioned earlier, responding to, you know, engineering design standards. So one is a major art dealer collector. There were the property owners on both sides of the parcel responsible for developing that right-of-way. So hence why we have the half-street here on the southern property boundary and the residential street up to the north. So these adjustments, you know, would require restriping down the line when these streets did get developed, but they also, you know, have opportunity for street parking to maintain for some of the residents on two sixty-seven. And this park does grow in use and, and demand, they, there can be overall on the streets. And then one of the elements in here is utility connections. So being that this is really the first phase of the larger Jenkins Creek Park, we want to make sure that we're using this opportunity in development to maximize getting utilities to the other side so that we don't have to come back and, and dig up utilities down the line. So planning ahead or forecasting future use for some of the elements in the master plan, and then developing out utilities so that we're ready when some of those elements do come forward. So some of the COVID sewer lines for higher demand within the park. And then some of those, that future infrastructure would, would then be in for some of the elements, future elements, when funding comes available, opportunities from power companies. And then this is probably one of the most important, the future accessible restroom identified in the master plan. We've got playgrounds, picnic shelters, so stuff that is gonna require higher use and, and restrooms out on site. So kind of in line with, as stuff is developed in a larger part of the park, the restroom is identified to be installed here at the parking lot as well. Is it any question?
Council have any questions? Beth.
Thank you, Mayor. Kyle, I have a, a quick question for, for clar, for clarification. You were talking about the shared right-of-way. More specifically, the, the part that's on southeast two sixty-seventh. Did, did I hear you say that once this is put in, those residents are going to be responsible for shared maintenance of that? Or did I hear you wrong?
I'm on the, the north there.
Yes, yes.
Oh, no, it would be maintained the same as it is now with the city.
Oh, okay. Great, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Sean?
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate this. It's really kind of exciting to see it coming together and developing that kind of gateway to Jenkins Creek Park. I, I don't really have a question, other than I really appreciate the placement of a kiosk there that will provide information to visitors and, and potential for interpretive displays to kind of talk about, you know, the natural and cultural history of the area. So I guess that would be up to the Parks Department to figure out what we put there, but I wanna just plant a seed right now that we think long and cast the net wide on who we want to talk to about what information we want to put there. So your basic stuff about accessibility, that sort of thing, but also what resources in this, in this park do we want to, to interpret? So anyway, I'm excited about it. So anyway, I'm excited about it.
That's, yeah, great, I don't know. Interpretive. Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Jennifer.
Um, I don't have a question. I just wanted.
You went on mute.
I did, um, just to say how great this looks and what a great opportunity for this park to be really opened up. And what an opportunity for that roundabout. I mean, that, this will just open up that area and just grab everyone's attention. And allow a lot of access into that park. Um, I mean, there are no true parking spaces at this point. We just kind of pull up. In that weird area in front of the bridge. So this is fantastic. Thank you very much for your, um, vision on this.
Thank you, Jennifer. Anybody else? All right, seeing nobody else raise their hand, we do have a motion before us to potentially approve the concept design for the Jenkins Creek Park. In substantial form as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Jared and seconded by Sean. Jared, would you like to speak to your motion?
Sure, yeah. I think, I think it, I mean, it looks really great. It provides a lot of, you know, some of the missing elements that we need. Provides a lot of mobility and right now, driving my Tesla cross-country, I really like the idea of putting. Um, electric vehicle charging stations and infrastructure. Um, I think that's a cool opportunity for the city as well. Um, so yeah, we'll hardly support this.
Thank you, Jared. Sean would like to speak to your second.
Yeah, just, just the same. Um, it's, I'm excited about, uh, this getting going and creating kind of an entrance to. To Jenkins Creek Park, um, as Jennifer mentioned and others have stated, i- if you don't know the parks there. Many people don't, don't access it. So this'll open that area up and I think be a real asset to that part of the, the community.
Thank you, Sean. Anybody else wish to speak for or against the motion? I just want to say that I fully support this. Um, it used to be grandpa's barbecue and he would sell barbecue for people. It would go out into the park and sit and eat in the, the old, uh, deck. Or dock that used to be out there. And so seeing this come to a full circle, I'm, I'm really supporting this. This is going to be awesome to see once this is completed. With that, it's been moved and seconded to approve the concept design for Jenkins Creek Park in substantial form as presented. Call for a roll call vote. Jared, how do you vote?
I.
Sean, how do you vote?
I.
Christina, how do you vote?
Hi.
Jennifer, how do you vote?
Hi.
Joe, how do you vote?
Hi.
Beth, how do you vote?
Hi.
I also vote aye. It is unanimous to approve the concept design for Jenkins Creek Park. Kyle, thank you very much and Ethan, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, with that, we will move into new business item number four, consider resolution adopting a city of Covington flag policy. Mark.
Thank you very much, Mayor Wagner, and good evening, council members. Um, just as a little reminder of how we got here back in two thousand twenty-one, which seems like a very long time ago now. Uh, an issue came up where we realized as both staff and council that the city did not have a policy addressing. When, how, and what should happen for flying flags both in and outside of city hall. So from there, council asked that staff bring back an item to the summit. And at the summit, we had a, a very robust thorough discussion with council about what council would like to see for a flag policy. So we went over at that point that, that the city doesn't actually own our flag poles. And we outlined a bunch of different options for what council could potentially pursue. And from there, council would give us pretty clear, direct, very, very clear direction that it'd like to limit it to the flags that are required by law. And continue with the status quo of what we've been doing both inside and outside of government of the city facilities. And so from there, um, after this, after we had this direction, staff did a little more research and looked into this. And Krista and Reagan identified that the city and also at different points had flown the Arbor flag, the Tree City flag. And Seahawks flag to celebrate, uh, a professional sports team going to the Super Bowl. So what we really did here in formulating this policy was take council's direction. And make sure that everything that would be flown inside and outside of city facilities would be those that are required by law. And then also adding in those very, those other very minor areas that of different kinds of flags that could be flown. And that's one, uh, flags for that, this, for awards that the city has applied for, like the Tree City Award Arbor. Um, excuse me, Arbor Day Flag and also things for professional regional sports teams. Something that really brings the community together. And, um, as you all remember, when the Seahawks went to the Super Bowl. It was a time where I, I haven't, I don't think I've ever seen Seattle sports that excited since like ninety-five. Um, and what we also found out in the past couple of months with the flag policy. Is that we, we also didn't have a way to address when flags should be flown at half-staff. And we wanted to make sure that we had very clear direction for the city manager and delegation of authority from council. So we can be consistent and make sure that we are always following the same set of rules. So as I went through this process, staff, we reached out to, uh, the VA, the Veterans of Foreign Wars Post six, seven, eight, five in Kent. And we asked them to give us their input because our veterans have very, uh, should be consulted and. Um, have really, have really good input on how to honor the flags of our nation, POW, MIA and the state. And they gave us really two great suggestions that flags, when possible, should be made in the USA. That might not always be feasible, but we've added that in for when we can. And also giving a little more discretion to the, um, to the city manager to fly flags for different amounts of time. Depending on the circumstances, but really keeping it focused on when, what kinds of, when we lower the flags. And then just having the discretion more being about the time. So from there, uh, both of the policy that I've drafted for your consideration. It covers, applies to both indoor and outdoor flags. And it gives that the little bit of community, um, involvement with professional sports teams. But none of this is by request. This is all of the city manager's discretion. And it's limited to what council had to the exact direction that council is providing. So there, the very limited discretion are to fly Tree City flag or Seahawks flag. Or, you know, Mariners going to the World Series, but that's. Those would be the kind of moments that there would be a, a small amount of discretion. So I know we've talked about this a lot in the past and I would be happy to answer any questions or if you have any concerns with the flag policy. I'd all, I'm here and ready to answer anything that you may ask.
Um, this looks great, Mark. I really appreciate this. This really covers our bases and protects us from a lot of the concerns I had. Um, only concern here is flying a sports flag, supporting a, a profit-based franchise system. I'm not sure that the city should necessarily get him, get involved with that, especially. Sports can be a pretty, uh, hot topic and. I, I just don't think it's necessary, but you know, obviously up for council discussion.
Thank you, Jennifer. Anybody else? All right, seeing nobody raise their hand, we have before us. Actually, I do have one question, Mark. Um, since we do not own these flag poles, does, um. Justin, the owner of the shopping center, have a problem with this for the flag poles in front of city hall? Reagan or Mark?
I can address it with what's in the policy. He does not.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we have a potential motion in front of us to approve the resolution adopting the city of Covington flag policy. In substantial form as presented. Council wish to take action tonight.
I moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Christina and seconded by Sean to approve the resolution adopting the city of Covington. Flag policy in substantial form is presented. Christina, would you like to speak to your motion?
Sure. When this subject first came up, we had nothing to, uh, rely on to look back at and the. Um, logistics for it and now we do, and it looks wonderful. And I think it's very clear and concise and. Really gives us something to reflect on when making decisions about flags. Thank you.
Thank you. Sean, would you like to speak to your second?
Yeah, I'll only just say I, I echo, um, what Christina just said. And I think it's going to be really helpful to, uh, alleviate any confusion there is, uh, among the public or even ourselves. And make it real simple to explain when, um, and how we would fly the flag at half-staff. Or, you know, what flags we will fly. So, um, I do think it, it definitely will help. Protect us and, and make it easier to explain to the public. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Anybody else wishing to? Support or not the motion before us? All right. Um, I just want to say, Mark, I really appreciate all the hard work that you and, and the entire team, Reagan and everybody that put into this. It's very well-written and, um, I will be very much supporting this. A call for a roll call vote. Jared, how do you vote?
I'm.
Sean, how do you vote?
I.
Christina, how do you vote?
Hi.
Jennifer, how do you vote?
Hi.
Joe, how do you vote?
I.
Beth, how do you vote?
Hi.
I also vote aye. It is unanimous to approve the resolution adopting the city of Covington flag policy. Thank you all very much. Next is new business item number five, the two thousand twenty-one fourth quarter financial reports. Casey. Are you there, Casey? You were on mute, Casey. There you are.
There we go. Can you handle now?
Yes.
My phone's always a little tricky between having my laptop open and my phone, just in case I lose you guys. I learned my lesson. Okay, one second, let me turn my screen. Okay, can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So I'm going to kind of go right past the first part here because I'll go over, all of these are just summarized by funds. So if you're just looking for a quick snapshot, this first page is kind of gives you an overview of all the funds. I will touch on all of those later on. So I'm just going to go ahead and jump down to property taxes. So for property taxes, uh, through fourth quarter, the city has received, uh, two point nine million dollars. And technically, that's our levy for the year. So how it works at year-end is we book the entire levy for the year. And then, um, with that, so it gets reported at year-end because of accrual. So, um, we're two point two percent higher than twenty twenty. And normally my collections come in about twenty-five thousand dollars less than a levy. So technically I don't have that, that much cash, but that's our revenue that's booked, if you understand that. So for the real estate excise taxes, uh, had a great year for real estate excise taxes. For fourth quarter collections, one point eight million dollars or a hundred and fourteen percent of our budget. Thirty-three point seven percent higher than twenty twenty. And, and just to put that in some perspective, um, the one point eight million dollars covers our debt service by an additional seven hundred thousand dollars. Our debt service is, uh, one point one million dollars. So, um, all of those extra funds will real, roll forward to twenty twenty-two. And help offset, uh, there won't probably be any general fund transfer that'll have to occur to help pay for debt service for this year. Because of all those extra funds that came in last year. So, so I was great. For, um, home sales, just to walk you through that, there was a hundred and twenty-four new home sales last year. Four hundred and forty-eight existing home sales, four commercial sales, five building sales and twelve lot sales through fourth quarter. The sales tax. For sales tax, we have a couple of different pots now. We have some unrestricted sales tax that can be used for any purpose within the city. And that has come in at just a little over six million dollars for the year or a hundred and twenty-four percent of budget. And it's an increase over twenty twenty of almost twelve percent, eleven point eight percent. And if I'm looking at each category comparing between fourth quarter twenty twenty-one and fourth quarter twenty twenty. Uh, retail came in higher at four point five percent. Construction was higher at forty-seven percent. The services increased by fourteen point two percent. All of their categories were up by twenty-two point nine percent. So again, again, an amazing year in the retail sales arena there. So the other pots that I was talking about is we have, uh, two dedicated restricted pots of sales tax. We have the HB fourteen oh six. And that is the one that we dedicated to rental assistance. And for last year, that went to my Maple Place. And we brought in just a little over forty-five thousand dollars that helped, um, low-income rental assistance here by Maple Place. Really a great benefit to the community. With a little bit of a decrease over last year of three point four percent. There is a cap on what we receive for HB fourteen oh six and that forty-five thousand, one seventy-six is it. For HB fifteen ninety, total collection for seven hundred and nine thousand, a hundred and twenty percent of budget. And this is the one where we can break it out between low-income housing or the, um. Community care assistant or navigator, I'm not sure what the new title is that you guys will be discussing, I believe at the next meeting. So, um, that's what those funds are dedicated for. Need to see our graph here. This keeps growing, growing, growing. I keep, I keep waiting for it to kind of top, top out, but it just hasn't yet. For utility taxes, fourth quarter is up by a hundred and eight thousand or four point eight percent over twenty twenty. You see, we've had some, um, some big jumps in electricity, uh, to jump some solid waste. Then you can also see how the telephone services, uh, has gone down. Telephone seems to inch down just a little bit every year. For the general fund, so the operating revenues are at a hundred and point five percent of budget. Just really came right in on what we were estimating. Still an increase over twenty twenty of nine point nine percent. And our total expenditures excluding transfers out came in at twelve point six million. It's an increase in spending of five point five percent as really kind of returned to a normal year, a normal staffing. Uh, again, though our budget was under, it was eighty-eight point one percent of total budget spent. And then I just wanted to go over just a couple of these departments. The city council, you can see, was only at thirty-nine point six percent of budget. And that's just because we had, um, anticipated maybe dispersing some of those HB fifteen ninety funds and we didn't do that this year. So they were budgeted for, we didn't spend them. So you guys are, were pretty low for the year. And then we had a couple of departments that were over budget. We had central services just barely over budget, three point three percent. And that's only because there was an emergency management program grant where we had spent some additional expenditures in that department. But you, you guys don't see the offsetting grant that came in on the revenue side. Little bit over there. And then the parks maintenance budget again there, they were over four point two percent. And that was because of some major vandalism that took place at CCP. Um, over probably twenty-five thousand dollars worth of damages. So those expenditures were in that department. But then we received a reimbursement from our insurance company, WCIA, to reimburse us for those expenses. So the public works department, which consists of streets and swim. Our street, their total operating revenues were at just a little over a million or ninety-nine point six percent. So again, just right on budget estimate. And just for a couple of the major revenues that are in there, we have the Comcast franchise fees. Came in just a little over budget, a little just two percent over budget, two hundred and fifty-seven, almost two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars came in. Our gas taxes were just a little bit below estimate at ninety-eight point four percent. But they were still up over twenty twenty by eight point six percent. Our motor vehicle license fees, uh, were at three hundred and sixty-seven thousand and they were down just a little bit, four point two percent over twenty twenty. All expenditures excluding the transfers out, we had a hundred and eleven point two percent. Uh, so for the, for the street fund, the street fund was a little bit over budget because we added a, um, an additional street maintenance worker last year. Like he started in November, so those salaries and benefits just pushed them over just a little bit for last year. For the street operating revenues, um, again, the general fund is, um, subsidizes the street fund. And so the difference between the revenues and expenditures there shortfall this last year was three hundred and forty-two thousand. And the general fund transfer of four hundred and forty thousand helps to offset that deficit. For the swim fund, again, this is kind of like the property tax on if for the general fund where I booked the entire levy at year end. So the entire levy that I booked was that three point two million. We do have some collectibles, uncollectibles that we're working through. So they're a little bit higher than the general fund as far as what was uncollected at year end. But for total expenditures excluding transfers out, we're again under budget at eighty one point nine percent. So revenues came in a little higher, expenditures came in a little bit lower. So development services, again, they had a great year last year. Total revenues were at four point six million. They were a hundred and thirty nine point seven percent of budget, a huge increase over twenty twenty, forty two point six percent. The number of permits for single family residences were at a hundred and twenty seven compared to a hundred and eighteen in twenty twenty, so an increase. And there was also an increase in all of the permit categories this year, there was six hundred twelve, and in twenty twenty, there was five hundred. And then for total operating expenditures, they came in under budget at ninety two point six percent. So aquatics, recreation and cultural arts, fourth quarter budget to actual for aquatics revenue were at a hundred and twenty four point seven percent of budget, which is great. Things are starting to pick back up. And cultural, our recreation and cultural arts were at a hundred and seventeen point nine percent of budget. And I will just mention, it's hard to compare year over year because twenty was such a poor year, but we are at like three hundred and eleven percent higher than twenty twenty. So it's great. We went from two hundred thousand dollars in twenty twenty to eight hundred thousand dollars in twenty twenty one. So things are definitely increasing and you can also kind of see that from the flash count there on the side. Operating expenditures, aquatics came in at eighty eight point two percent budget, so under budget. And recreation and cultural arts came in at seventy two percent budget, so they were under budget also. Investment, we have a total of almost thirty five million dollars for ending balances. Is an increase from twenty twenty of almost six million dollars. The largest gainers were the general fund, development services fund, the C L F R S fund, which is the ARPA fund, and the swim fund. And I'll just mention that the general fund, it's the majority of it is because we underspent our expenditures. So that's why you're seeing that that chunk of cash increase. You can see the general fund is different here, the two point seven million. And then the development services fund was also a large gainer, half a million dollars. And again, that's there, you know, have a forty three percent increase in revenue over twenty twenty, so a big chunk there. And then the C L F R S fund, which is the ARPA funds that we received last year, that's the two point nine million. And then the swim fund was also a large gainer, and really that's just due to delayed swim projects due to COVID that, you know, we're just getting going on. And just a couple of other things here at the local government investment pool, again, super low on our interest rate, we're at point zero nine percent. And we but we have about twenty five, almost twenty six million dollars invested there. Is that some investments in the out outside the L G I P, almost six million dollars, all currently held in government agencies? For our capital investment program, go over all of this, but I'll highlight a few things. So we've collected just a little over one point one million dollars in our G M A mitigation fees, and those goes towards helping out our transportation projects. We've received a little over one million dollars in parks and loo and park impact fees. And again, those go towards helping out our park projects that we're working on. And speaking of some of those projects, we can see, I'm just gonna point out a couple of the big ones that happened this year. Jenkins Creek Park, we had the Zaleznik property purchase, so that was a big purchase last year. We have our eleven twenty seven S R five sixteen widening at Jenkins Creek going, so you can see some expenditures there. Two hundred and four, of course, see a lot of revenue and expenditures flowing in and out of that fund. And then we also had our Eco Park land purchase, the cornerstone purchase there, that land purchase. And just a little bit of demo wrapping wrapping up in the town center. So as far as our bonds, let me scroll back up here. Our bond's not a lot changed, although we did have our principal payment in November. So our current balance now is five million seventy thousand. And still those are scheduled for payoff in twenty twenty seven. And then our public works trust fund loan, our current balance is just a little over six hundred forty four thousand, and those will be paid off just in two years in twenty twenty four. And lastly, our total balance for our traffic impact fees, those are the ones where I talked about our supporting the transportation projects. We ended the year at almost one point seven million dollars. So that'll be helpful for Dawn rolling forward into twenty twenty two to support his transportation project. And then just lastly, the other thing I will mention is just some things that we're keeping an eye on for moving forward into this year is just the general inflation that we're seeing. We're at eight percent year over year. So that's definitely something we're keeping an eye on. Just the conflict that's occurring in Ukraine affecting gas prices and things like that. We may see a little bump in our fuel taxes in the street fund, which is nice, but then we also may see people tightening up and pulling back a little bit in other areas. So we're keeping an eye on those things. Any questions anybody has?
Sean.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Casey. That that's that's great to see the fourth quarter end up that way. It's really, really encouraging. I appreciate your mentioning inflation and keeping track of that because I I think costs for things are just going to continue to go up. On the flip side, we had such an outstanding year for revenues. How are we? What are we projecting for next year? You know, you kind of talked about how you saw that eventually you're waiting for that that ramp to kind of level off. I I share that concern and I'd be surprised if our revenues were as good next year as as this last year. So how are we taking into effect those two things? The cost could go up and that our revenues could take take a hit and maintaining the services that we want.
Those are for sure things that we that we're looking at when we're projecting our forecast. One of the latest articles that I just read is they were talking about there's a thirty five percent chance of maybe possibly seeing a recession next year. So we'll we'll definitely be keeping an eye on those and we're very conservative anyway, you know, we really kind of overestimate our expenditures and underestimate our revenues. So we hopefully leave a little bit of a gap in there for some some changes with the forecast and the economy. We keep an eye on the state forecast, county forecast, and the Puget Sound forecast. So hopefully, we'll we'll be able to to make those adjustments as as we need to.
Thank you, Casey. Anybody else have any questions for Casey? I don't see anybody else raising their hand. So Casey, thank you very much for a great report and thank you to your team for all the hard work. I was in there earlier today and spoke with Stacy. So it's always great to see everybody in your team. So thank you.
Thanks.
All right, next up is the new new business item number six is to consider authorizing the city manager to execute amendment number two to professional services agreement zero eight eight dash two zero two one with Hal Beck and Bard Incorporated for design related services for SoCo Park. And that agenda item was sent out last night with twenty four hour notice, and I will turn that over to Ethan.
Yeah, thank you. So this is an amendment to a current agreement we have with H B B. They do our design related service for our SoCo Park project. And we're looking to put together a few grant applications. And the deadline for those grant applications is coming up on May third. So we needed to get this on the agenda tonight, and this amendment allows them to assist us with some of the grant application work. Some of it adds to just capacity levels to allow us to get this work done. And some of it is of a technical nature to make sure that we made all the requirements of the grant application. The amendment number two, the cost is fourteen thousand eight hundred and ten dollars. And it would be expended from the Parks Reserve Fund. There was a previous amendment of amendment one, which was thirty thousand dollars. And so with the two together, they require council approval. So that's why it's coming to you tonight. The one last thing I'll say is the R C A R C O grants that we'll be targeting. They are competitive grants, so there's no guarantee that we'll get a grant award. But they can benefit the city with funding of up to five hundred thousand dollars or more. So certainly have a payback if we get the grant award. With that, I'll take any questions or it's up for council consideration.
Also have any questions for Ethan tonight? All right, before us is a potential motion to authorize the city manager to execute amendment number two with H B B Incorporated for Design Related Services for SoCo Park.
Second.
Been moved by Beth, seconded by Joe to authorize the city manager to execute amendment number two with H B B Incorporated for Design Related Services for SoCo Park. Beth, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yeah, just briefly, thank you, Ethan, for that explanation. And I know we we are trying to invest in our park system and nothing is guaranteed, but to put the best foot forward and have the best grant application to enhance our chances of of getting anything, this is the right decision in my mind.
Thank you, Beth. Sure, would you like to speak to your second?
Nothing tonight.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak for or against the motion? Seeing nobody raise their hand, it's been moved and seconded to authorize the city manager to execute amendment number two with H B and be incorporated for Design Related Services for SoCo Park. Call for a re call for a vote. Jared, how do you vote?
Hi.
Sean, how do you vote?
Hi.
Christina, how do you vote?
Hi.
Jennifer, how do you vote? Joe, how do you vote?
Hi.
Beth, how do you vote?
Hi.
I also vote aye is unanimous to authorize the city manager to execute amendment number two. Next up is new business item number seven, which is to authorize the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with epicenter services for a solid waste procurement process. This was agenda item number C three. I will be recusing myself and leaving the meeting and Mayor Pro Tim Smith will be taking it over. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we'll give it a second here. All right, Jeff has left the meeting, so I guess I'm turning this over to Dawn.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Smith and Council. Tonight before you is a request to authorize the city manager to execute a professional service agreement with epicenter services to assist the city with expert technical assistance and expertise in solid waste in the solid waste procurement process. So what this does is gives us they're kind of the kind of the expert really in in the field to helping agencies. It's kind of a complicated, those contracts have many nuances as we, I think we've learned a little bit, particularly over the last year. So having having them on board will be a great assistance to staff. And so so that's with epicenter services. The estimated cost is about forty thousand dollars for the consultant, and that's typically has been included. If there's a new contract that comes out of that, that the vendor would reimburse that as part of the the contract negotiations. So I am happy to answer any questions if anyone has any.
Thank you, Dawn. Joe.
So when we work with epicenter, how long does it take before they start getting things back from the haulers? Like, how long before they start seeing any any request for information or any just paperwork in general from the haulers to start saying, hey, we'll be interested in this. What are we looking at or something to that extent? I think with the way the 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 scope is and the way that I understand it, typically within, you know, probably late or I'd say probably fall around that time is what I would expect. Once we put everything together, get it out on the street. Most of that is supposed to take be taken care of in the summer around that time. And then going through the procurement process, that's when we expect that. That's kind of going into the fall, so end in October. So that's when we'll start seeing what's out there and what what people are. You know, what haulers are saying, what interest is out there and that type of thing, I would expect during that time. Does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you very much.
Any other questions for Dawn? All right, I don't see any, so I'll pull up, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with epicenter services LLC for a solid waste procure procurement process.
Still moved.
All right, it's been moved by Joe and seconded by Jennifer, I think. No?
No.
Beth, sorry. Joe, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yeah, I I think this is needed. We need to see what's out there. It's, we've had this contract, the current contract with some minor changes to it for over a decade now. And I think it's a it's time to see what's out there, what we can do. And worst thing that's gonna happen is someone's gonna come back and give us a great rate. Best thing, best thing that's gonna happen is someone's gonna come back and give us an even better rate. So that's my hope.
Thank you, Joe. Beth, do you want to speak to your second?
Yeah, just to we are going through potential changes here and and whatever path we decide to take, having all of that information is so important. And I know our staff could certainly use this support as we navigate these these waters in the next year. So having this technical expertise will be very helpful.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak for or against? All right, seeing nobody, I will call for a roll call vote. And I'm gonna go as people are portrayed on my screen. Beth, how do you vote?
Aye.
Christina, how do you vote?
Aye.
Joe, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jennifer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jared, how do you vote? How do you vote?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, so it's unanimous. All right, I think that's it for that agenda item. Can you bring bring the mayor back?
I just let him know he can read you.
Okay.
There we go. Thank you all very much. Let's move on to our last new business item of the night to accept council member Coco's resignation and approve a process to fill the vacancy of council position number three. And so we have before us the, we have Jared's letter of resignation, which will be part of the motion. And then we also have on page eighty eight, the process staff recommends for filling the va- the vacancy, which is that we will accept the resignation by a motion and majority vote or not. I guess we have to if he's moving to Texas. Staff will advertise the council vacancy via proclamation and notice of vacancy on the city website and city Facebook page. Staff will also provide the notice of vacancy to newspapers, radios, and so on. And then, if I can get my mouse, applications will be accepted by email through May tenth of two thousand twenty two. One thing I'd like to add to that is by five P M on May tenth, because that is our council meeting that night where we can review the letters of interest. Then at that time, that night, we have the option to select which applicants to interview, meaning that not all applicants may be selected. And that way, the following And that with the following council meeting, which would be on May twenty-fourth at six PM. Council has the opportunity to interview the applicants for council position number three. And then during the regular council meeting scheduled for May twenty-fourth at seven. Council may discuss the qualifications of the applicants in executive session. And then make an appointment to council position number three, if so desired out. In public. And we can modify this process during the special or regular meeting on May twenty-fourth. Sean.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I had a question on that process. So if we're discussing. The, so let's say we go through and we discuss the qualifications of a potential candidate in executive session. We would close executive session and then come back after that and then move to appoint that person.
Correct. We would have, we would hold the actual discussion.
Okay.
Make the motion of during. The. Council meeting.
But after executive session.
If we want to have an executive session, does this, all we would do is discuss qualifications only. We do not make motions or discuss who we would want to see as council.
Okay.
Joe.
I, I understand that we're in the motion or in the, the procedure, it says by email. In the past, we have accepted them if they were dropped off at city hall, if the applications or letters of interest. Would? That, is that still an option? Or are we just looking more for email to make it easier for us to keep things together?
Regan?
They, they can drop it off as well if that's something the council wants.
I'm, I'm good either way. I just was wondering. Why the change or if it was just, we're moving more and more to that technological age.
I, I, I don't know why the change. I don't recall if last time we, I, I thought last time this was the same way, but I, I think either way, right, Krista, it doesn't matter.
I, I might be thinking of long ago when we appointed Sean, that there were people who were dropping it off.
Yeah, whichever, I mean, if people want to submit an application, we'll, we'll take it, you know, whether it's electronic or hard copy.
Does that work for you, Krista?
Yes, it does.
Okay. So we can take the letters of interest via email or. In. Person. I mean, they can drop it off city hall. Then the recommendation for interview process is the order, the interviews is determined by drawing names. All applicants selected by council will be interviewed. Together by the council in a panel format. Wherein each applicant interim will be asked to answer questions posed by each council member, and this is if we have more than. One person that we're going to be interviewing. And each candidate is then allowed two minutes for closing comments. Deliberation and selection, we may recess. Notice, we may recess into executive session to discuss qualifications. Ball candidates, nominations, voting and selection of a person to fill the vacancy is conducted during an open session. Nomination process will follow the regular nomination process set forth in rule three. Point two point three, where the chair opens the nomination. And each council member may nominate one individual. No second is required. And the council members nominating and the nominees shall have an opportunity to make public comment. Before voting commences. So voting shall, just like we did in the last time. Voting shall commence and the order nominations were made, council members will ask. To, for a voice vote and a raise of hands. As soon as one of the nominees receives a majority vote of the entire council, which is four votes. Then the chair will declare him or her appointed. No votes will be taken on the remaining nominees. And then the rest talks about a tie vote, or if nobody gets a majority vote, how we would proceed for that, so just. Follow up on the schedule. We. Vote on a motion to accept Jared's. Resignation, letter resignation tonight, and if council wishes to move forward with this direction. Of. Filling the nominee, the schedule would be that Jared's. Tomorrow, Jared's resignation will become effective. The city would issue a proclamation published on city website, city web, Facebook page and so on. About the vacancy. Letters of interest would be due to the city by five PM on May tenth, if council wishes. And then council interview, that night, we would discuss qualifications of those that we would like to interview. And then the twenty-fourth, as we interview the candidates and move forward with appointing somebody if we wish to on the twenty-fourth. Does council have any other questions? Beth?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So just to, to clarify, on May. Ten, if we decided to approve all of this tonight. And we would say by five PM. On that day, so that we, and we're going to have a special session prior to council. Or after our regular council meeting, have an executive session to review the applications and then. Decide. Who we feel would be qualified enough to schedule an interview with.
Correct.
Okay, got it, just to make sure. So we'll have that blocked out, okay.
Yep. Cause sometimes we receive letters of interest of people that live outside the city limits.
Sure.
Or they're not qualified to fill the position, cause you have to, I believe you have to be a registered voter and you have to live within the city. The city of limits of Covington for one year.
Great, thank you. Appreciate that.
Regan? You have, okay. Anybody else have any questions? All right, so before us. Is the potential to accept the resignation of council member Coco effective? Tomorrow, April thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two. That means you can't leave early tonight, Jared, if we approve it. And approve the process to fill the council position number three vacancy. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Jennifer and seconded by Joe to accept the resignation of council member Coco effective tomorrow. April thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two, and approve the process to fill the council position number three vacancy. Jennifer, would you like to speak to your motion?
Sadly, I, I'm not thrilled that, that Jared is leaving, but I get it, I understand and, you know, this is part of the process and I, I look forward to. Bringing on another great council member. We will do you proud, Jared.
Thank you, Jennifer. Joe, would you like to speak to your second?
I'm content with our process. We've used it before. I will miss Jared and I'll save some of my, all the rest of my comments about him for council staff. Comments, but other than that, I. This should be a fun process. I know that there are many people in our community who would love to work with us and I'm. Looking forward to seeing who applies.
Thank you, Joe. Anybody else wish to speak for or against the motion? Seeing nobody else raise their hand, it's been moved and seconded to accept the resignation of council member Coco effective April thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two. And approve the process to fill council position number three vacancy. So I guess I don't ask Jared for his vote. So I'll start with Sean. How do you vote?
Aye.
Christina, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jennifer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Joe, how do you vote?
Aye.
Beth, how do you vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, I'm getting choked up too, Beth. And I also vote aye, so it's unanimous. To unfortunately accept the resignation of council member Coco effective tomorrow, April thirteenth, and approve the process. To fill council position number three vacancy. Thank you all very much. And with that, that is the last item of new business. Looking at future agenda items, does council have anything they would like to see on a future agenda? We do have a meeting on. April twenty-sixth, we have a special meetings. Five forty interviews. And then going into our regular meeting. One thing I would like to bring up at a future agenda item since Jared is leaving. That leaves us down one person on the audit committee, so at some time. In the next couple of council meetings that, if. We can get a majority of the council, well, we're gonna have to have. This come forward, so we can have a third person put on this audit committee. And Regan, do we need a majority of consensus for that?
Uh, we've, we've got that on a future agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Right, right, Krista, I'm pretty sure I.
Yes, April twenty-sixth.
Oh, great, thank you. All right, let's go to council staff comments. We will start with our acting chief, Adam. Welcome.
Hey, thank you, Mayor. We are gonna be accepting two new people into the city. One should be starting April thirtieth, the second, I don't have a date on yet. Cause we're still working that out with the county. Uh, the second one that we're accepting, we don't have a date on, he has previously worked in the city. On a temporary duty assignment and was very interested in coming back and we're happy to have him back. And then the one we're getting on the thirtieth, Deputy Sorge. Is. Got a couple of years on and has been working in unincorporated Maple Valley precinct. And we're looking forward to having him. He'll be working nights, so. That's all I have.
Great, that is great news. It will have some. Some new additions to the team. Thank you for that. Uh, next, Ethan.
Uh, no additional comments, thank you.
Thank you, Ethan. Dawn.
Thanks, I just wanted to give one update just on the, our two hundred and fourth project. Out there on five sixteen, contractors just waiting to, for weather to do some final paving on that, so. That'll be great, it'll potentially could. Take a couple of days depending on, on the weather and the timing and of all of that. At least for five sixteen, they could possibly do it in a day, but it, it just kind of, it'd probably be more than that. And then they'll also be doing paving on two hundred and four, so all of those have been kind of looking for weather windows and that's kind of the last major. Work for that project, so excited for that. And I just wanted to say thanks to Jared for his time on council and wishing him the best in the future.
Thank you, Dawn. Selena. You're on mute, Selena.
Good evening, council. I have nothing to report tonight.
Thank you, Selena. Casey.
Uh, nothing tonight, other than to say well wishes to Jared on his next adventure here. Thank you.
Thanks, Casey. Regan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of items today, I was able to participate with the oversight committee. In interviews for the King County Sheriff. As you know, there's three finalists that I sent out last week and. Three very good candidates, two really stood out in those interviews with, and, and one especially stood out. So as an oversight committee, we compiled our recommendations and have submitted those to the executive. There is a bit more of a process, P SAC will do some interviews tomorrow and then some public forums that I, I think I forwarded out to the council last week. And a decision should be made soon with this hopeful start date in mid-June for our new sheriff. So exciting to see that come about. On Thursday, the AWC Board of Directors, I'll be participating in that, will be doing interviews for the new CEO for AWC. So that's exciting to see that coming into play as well. And then, and I'll, I'll inform the council, once we have additional information on that. And then Jared, I just want to wish you the very best. I've loved getting to know you these last couple of years. I feel like you, you brought this youth and exuberance and innovative ideas, ways to think to the city. And from city staff, we just deeply appreciate your purity of character. And willingness to jump in and, and serve. I know Texas will fit you well and you'll do good there. We'll miss you.
Thanks, Regan. Mark.
Thank you, Mayor. We do have an executive session tonight to discuss legal counsel regarding current or potential litigation and legal risks of current proposed action. Pursuant to our C W forty-two thirty, one-one-zero, sub-one, sub-little-A, sub-I. And other than that, Councilmember Coco, I wish you the best and moving to the, to Texas. My wife's whole was families from Texas, so I spend a fair amount of time there and enjoy. It's been nice working with you.
Thank you, Mark. How long is the executive session tonight when I make the announcement?
Um, it shouldn't take more than twenty minutes, so whatever twenty minutes are from just naming the, the exact time would be great.
Thank you, Mark. Krista. Breaking up, Krista. No.
Thank you.
Sorry, Krista. Uh, let's go to Christina. I'm mixing it up again tonight.
You really are, and I don't know, I like the front row, but I don't like to go first. I guess I'll just start with the obvious. Jared, it's been awesome to get to know you, I guess from the campaign trail to council. I think you still hold the record of. The youngest lad on the, on the council, but. We'll see how long you can hold that track, but no, it's been truly awesome. Covington has been blessed by you and. Wherever you and your family go, may success follow you. And wish you only the smoothest, brightest future. Nothing else for me.
Thank you, Christina. Joe.
So I remember the first time I met Jared. He came to a council meeting with his wife Christie. And I had to do a double take because Christie looks like her sister who I went to school with, and I had to. Do a double take, say, eh, no, no, not her. What's going on here? And that's how I met Jared was, cause I was like, I just kept staring at this guy. I was like, who is that and why? Okay, figured it out. And we, we talked for about twenty minutes after that council meeting. And then from there, we blossomed a pretty good friendship. I. When he told me that he was leaving, I got a little choked up. I don't think he heard me get choked up, but I did. And I was, I'm sad. We're, we're losing a youthful voice for Covington. Which is something that I think we, we always need on this council is that youthful voice. I am happy that he and his family have found a new place in Texas. I know they are going to enjoy it. I know. He's already got big plans for what he's gonna do down there. But I will say that I'm gonna miss going and getting some beers with you. Getting some hot dogs or even just driving down to Olympia for the AWC conference and. Making jokes about this, that and the other thing. Enjoying our time together. I wish you nothing but the best. And I am, again, saddened to see you leave. But our loss will be Texas's gain. Again, I wish you nothing but the best. All that being said, I have pick tomorrow night. I get to do that from Chattanooga, so it will be ten PM for me when pick starts, so it's gonna be a very late, long day for me tomorrow. I do have one question for. Chief Easterbrook. I have to get fingerprinted for doing student teaching. Can I come down to the station and do that or do I have to go over to the precinct for that?
Uh, you actually have to go over to the precinct, cause we aren't able to do that at our station. We can only print you criminally, which I'd rather not, so.
I would appreciate you not doing that. However, I'm certain that there are a few members of this day who would find that hilarious and ask for pictures, so. But thank you for that. And again, Jared, nothing but the best. I hope you enjoy the rest of the drive down to Texas. And keep informed as to who we find to replace you. They'll probably be better looking than you, of course, but you never know.
Oh, Beth.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Jared, fantastic. No, yeah, I know we've had a lot of deep conversations and shared the beers and. Worked on our campaigns together and done all the things and hopefully our paths will cross again. I wish you and your family all the best in Texas. We'll be there in a couple of years for the, the total eclipse, path to totality down there, so. If we're anywhere near where you're at, I'd love to hook up again. But thank you so much for your service, both to our, our country, both to your city, the community. You're so active in so many wonderful causes and. As Joe said, our loss is Texas's gain, so. As Joe said, our loss is Texas's gain. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Beth. Sean.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just echo. What's been said, Jared, we're gonna miss you. Best of luck in Texas and keeps updated on on how things turn out. We'd love to to hear. How your new life is is turning out. So. I've got a couple of things to update the the council on. I attended with Jeff and Beth the S C A dinner. A couple of weeks ago was it was great to see everyone and actually be out and about. And while there, I met the representative for the Cedar Grove composting. Facility and got to talking and and they are willing to provide the council with a tour if anyone is interested. So. I guess just let me know if you're interested in taking a tour. I'm gonna touch base with them on potential. Dates and times, but I would assume it would be in. Well, I don't. I don't know what to assume, actually. But if you're interested in in touring it, let me know. And I'll pass that along and and find out when they can accommodate us. I had a good time last weekend, actually going out and talking to businesses about the. Survey that we put out for public safety. I was. Really encouraged to meet with a number of the business owners that happened to be in their businesses and they seemed. Pleased that the city was actually reaching out to them about public safety and how to get their ideas on how to make our community safer and. More welcoming. So I'll be interested to see what type of response we get. From those surveys. And then finally, and I think a couple of you suggested this, you know, I saw the cherry blossoms. But it was about a week ago in the Kohl's parking lot and. Driving around after that, I noticed there's quite a few cherry trees in Covington quite. So made me wonder if there shouldn't be some type of spring cherry blossom festival or Jubilee or something for Covington. Could be, you know, right there in that Kohl's parking lot, but I just want to put that on. I guess recreations radar and the city's radar that that might be a really nice kind of spring. Event, especially those trees are unbelievable on the Kohl's parking lot. So anyway. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Jennifer.
I will miss you sorely, Jared. I know everyone keeps mentioning you. We have some young folks on council, so what the heck? But in in addition to that, I would really like to thank you for really. Initiating the conversations about our equity cultural and social social justice commission. You were the one that brought that to council. You were leaving your mark in Covington. Your service is very much appreciated. I wish you nothing but amazingness. I know, I mean, your future is. Bright as the sun. I have no doubt that you will flourish and make a mark in Texas as well. I echo Sean's input about the the B N O surveys, lots of great input from businesses. Good conversations with some of the businesses. The ones that had time to actually talk, I had one come out and actually wait for me to come out from another business. So thank you, Reagan, for that idea. I think that was really great and helpful. And also, I wouldn't say I enjoy the state of the city videos, but I will say thank you. That's a great idea. Council should be more present in in the residents' faces. So folks know who we are and. Can, you know, be become more comfortable in approaching and talking to us. So that was great. And Carla, as always, is amazing to work with. So that was definitely. Again, I'm not gonna say fun experience, but it was it gets you out of your comfort zone, right? And so positive, I'll say that. But and yeah, thank you, Reagan, for really getting us out there. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Jennifer. Jared, I'm gonna have you go last. So. As the last speaking event of your Covington council. Before I say anything, Jared, I do want to update. I agree, Sean, I mean, Beth and I and Reagan was there too at the S C A Network Dinner. That was a. Great first time getting back out in person, seeing everybody. Just an awesome event. I also had the Southeast area, Southeast King County Mayor's meeting this morning. Lot of the discussion was on affordable housing and the comprehensive plan. And Joe, just so. One of the questions that I was told will come up tomorrow night is about the. Comprehensive plan. And climate element. And I did speak with Reagan and he checked into it. So we're only. We're in the initial phases of our comp plan amendment. And so if they ask. Cities for that, that's just giving you a heads up that we're just in the preliminary stages of our comp plan update. So that you're prepared for tomorrow night.
Thank you, Jeff.
You bet. S C A is said, so Sean, I did go on the tour of the. Cedar of the Cedar Grove in the past. I will go on it again. So let Karen Dawson know I'd be willing to do that. S C A is setting up tours of the landfill on April twenty-ninth. So reach out to S C A if you're interested in that. They are also going to do tours of the Department of Elections. Waste water treatment. And that's just for the beginning of this year or for the beginning, and they'll be looking at more coming up. Jared, it has been a pleasure working with you. I remember when I was first introduced to you. Margaret Pardo asked me to reach out to you and talk to you. So I dragged you along to Pat Sullivan's. Kickoff meeting, and I know you were very cautious of that. But that was the first time that I worked with you and partnered with you and just on the campaign trail. Moving forward for you getting on the council, and it's been a pleasure. You got very involved in the community. In the very beginning and worked hard. You got involved with the chamber. You got involved with community organizations. You jumped in with both feet. You did not hesitate. And you did it with a smile on your face because it was. How can I help here? And what can I do more to help in Covington? It was not about you. It is about what you and your family. Can do to help Covington and to be involved. So it's been a. A pleasure and an honor to serve with you. And like Jennifer said, and everybody else, you have left a mark. On this community and which will not be forgotten. And Texas, like Beth said, is. It's their game for you going down there. So I did warn some people that you are coming. Because a lot of my friends have moved down there, so they are prepared. And as soon as I know where you're living, they will come looking for you to get you involved down there as well. So. And with that, Jared, I will turn it over to you.
All right, I get to close it out.
Yes.
Important. Now, I just want to, you know, thank everyone for their friendships, their partnerships, the. The opportunity for me to learn from you. I think that. For me in Covington, that was the biggest takeaway is just everything that I've learned from the residents, from city staff, from. Council members. And. It, I I remember you first told me, Jeff, when I. First won the election, there was gonna be nothing but a fire hose from here on out. I mean, it's it's still that way years later. And no, I just appreciate it. You know, I'll still be here monthly for the Army. My unit is still here. They did not want to get rid of me. They did not want. To push me off to another unit. So I'm still still be here every month at least for that. So I look forward to still being able to connect and meet up with everyone. You know, working with with. Previous council members like. Fran and and talking with Margaret and, you know, it it. It just brings everything into a whole new perspective. And I'm just really grateful for the opportunity to. You know, just meet every single one of you. Margaret. When I first met Margaret. It was kind of a weird. Situation because I I really wanted to get involved. I really wanted to take that step from commission commissioner to. Council member and I approached her because I I saw somewhere that she was maybe retiring and that she wasn't. And that she was the mayor, but then she was a council member. So I sat her down for coffee and was like. Are you running? And she told me that she was not. And. One of the. The attributes that she was looking for was was someone that wanted to serve. And that would be my only recommendation recommendation when interviewing potential candidates is. Find someone that doesn't have some hidden agenda that that it's from the heart. They just want to serve and that Covington is is the best interest and. You know. My my goal too is that. Although I am the youngest selected for Covington so far, that 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 record will soon be broken. And that younger and younger. Individuals decide to run for council. It's. It's not an old person thing. I wouldn't say that anyone on our council is old. So for maybe Joe Simomo, but. It, you know, I just want to say thank you again for for everything. And I'm really excited for the move to Texas. I was until Reagan told me to go through Utah and and that was a I I don't think I've prayed so much in my life. I think I I told my wife, I said, the only thing so far I haven't seen is a tornado. And then I started knocking on wood because it's like, oh. I still have so much more to go. So. Thank you, guys. I really look forward to it. And I'll definitely keep keep everyone updated and I'll still be around. I'll still be a loud voice. It'll just be a different voice. So thank you.
And Jared, again, thank you. And I just want to give you a round of applause and appreciation for all the service that you've done. So thank you. And not just for Covington, but the service that you give for our nation being in your in the Army. So thank you for that as well, sir. With that, we will move into our second public comment period. Speakers will state their name, address, and organization. Comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate. And are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. Notice to all participants pursuant to state law R C W forty-two dot one seven eight dot five five five. Campaigning for any ballot measure or candidate in City Hall and or during any portion of the council meeting. Including the audience comment portion of the meeting is prohibited. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to address council this evening? Please raise their hand. Anybody in the audience wishing to address council? Seeing nobody raise their hand, the public comment period is closed. We will move into an executive session for discussion with legal counsel regarding current. Or potential litigation and legal risks. Of current or proposed action pursuant to R C W forty-two dot. Three zero dot one one zero sub one sub A sub little I. For approximately twenty minutes, meaning that we will come out of executive session at nine oh five. And no further action will be taken at that time. With that, council. Staff, thank you all very much. Have a great evening. Audience, thank you. And Krista emailed council the link for the executive session. So leave this one and come back into executive. And Krista, I will come back to this meeting after we're done. Would be nice. So I, well, coming back out of executive session, no further action is being taken tonight. This meeting is adjourned at eight fifty-nine. Thank you. And recording can end.